Hi everyone, so I'll do the part of the syllabus from Commercial Law 1, which is divided into basically two sections. Generally, the company law and then there is a separate part called agency, partnership and insurance. Usually, both the syllabus, the entire syllabus is covered by Nihal sir. But as of 2019, we had two separate lectures. Nihal sir did part of the company law and the rest which is the agency, partnership and insurance was covered by Chanakasir. So basically, I'll be telling you, like teaching you based on that part, based on what Chanakasir taught us. He'll be preparing the April paper, so I guess it's better to follow his format. And what I will be telling you all, it's directly out of the syllabus of what Chanakasir has taught us at lectures for the 2019 October paper. So if you're sitting the April paper, it's better to obtain the lectures notes. I do have it, but then I don't think we'll be posting it on the, with this session because it's not difficult to put Chanakasir's notes onto this. As if we had done it, so if anyone wants it, they can obtain it by messaging someone who did the 2019 October paper. It's freely available in PDF format, so everything should be okay. Basically, I'll be following the same note. Let me give you a small introduction about the subject. Basically, not the entire subject, but on the part that I'll be focusing on which is agency, partnership and insurance. So basically, this is an area that is mostly left out for most of the students. But there is a certain advantage if you do study this part. I don't advise anyone to leave the entire company law part and then do only partnership and insurance and agency. Because that's not viable for an exam because the company law is a huge area. Plus, the first question which is compulsory is basically from the company law section. So what I'd say is, if you are cramped for time and you're trying to cram everything in within a short period of time and you're not that great with maybe section numbers and lots of points. What I tell you to do is to go through the entire like area for company or choose a few areas which are like, you feel that could be important enough to be questioned for the first question. There are quite a few areas, large areas, you can either go through those if you're sure. If not, I'd say better to read through the entire company law section, just read through like not, don't study it because there is no point of studying that and then this area both. So better, if you can read through, maybe remember a few important sections and what they mention. And for the very important areas, if you can remember a few stuff, then you can go through this area which is done by Chanakasir quite thoroughly and I'll tell you the advantage is that areas are quite short. All three areas are quite short compared to company law. They, there is usually like the format would most likely obviously would not be changed this time. So there is a like generally, there is either four or five questions from these three areas altogether. So if you had, if you could do four, if there is only, if there is only four questions from this area, then you can do those four plus two from the company. Or you could, if there is five, if you're lucky and you studied this area and there's five questions from this area, then you only have to do one compulsory question from the company law. So which is basically quite an advantage to do it that way. So what I'm saying is that the areas here are quite short and the note is freely like straightforwardly given by sir. And if the paper in 2019 October is in something similar to what they are going to give in April, the questions are going to be very, very straightforward, straight out of the note. The thing is, the marking is probably going to be strict because the note is provided and there is nothing difficult in the areas. The answers you could either, you can preferably write your answer maybe in a point form or in a more, what do you call, lengthy sort of way, take some time and write your answers natively. Either way, if you have mentioned the points that are on the note, you should be alright. So what I'm saying is, this area is easy, as in easy to remember. There is less sections, as in only partnership has sections, so the rest is more like a theory note. And the thing is, the theory is not basically point forms also. So the theory is mainly a understanding. If you get the eye understanding and can like maybe summarize or elaborate according to the question and write the answer to your question in the exam, I'd say you'd be pretty safe. So consider this, if you're doing this area, I'd consider it quite an advantage. Hmm, and it should be, it should work out quite fine because the areas are pretty concise, short and very direct. Quite understandable, as in there is nothing complicated. Main general law more than any statutes or sections, only partnership has a partnership act. The rest are general law, like common law and a few cases and the cases are not that hard. Quite easy to remember, and everything should work out just fine. So now let's look at, look into the subject matter. The syllabus is divided into agency, insurance and partnership. I'll start with agency, which is probably the largest area out of the three areas. So agency being the largest and insurance being the smallest area that is there. Okay, so we'll start by defining the word agency or what agents, the meaning of agencies. Agency is a relationship between two parties where one party consents that the other should act on his behalf so as to effect relationships with third parties and the other consents or proceeds to act so. So basically, what an agency relationship is that it is a relationship between two parties where one party will be representing the other party in like easier way to understand. It is where one party, that means the agent represents the principal. So the principal will give consent to the agent to represent him on his behalf to third parties. Basically, when such a principal gives consent to an agent to act on his behalf, the power that is conferred to the agent is called authority. This is an important term for which we will like be elaborating later on, not on this session, on another different session. But the word authority or the power that passes from the principal to the agent is important. There's, there are different forms of authority, which we'll all also be discussing in further topics. So whenever you come across any a principle consenting or giving power to an agent, it's important to use the term authority. So moving on, there are, so there is three parties usually involved in the creation of agency. That is the principal, agent and a third party. So principal and the agent are the main two parties which is important to the contract of agency. It happens between the agent and the principal. However, when the representation by the agent happens to a third party. So there are usually in such a representation, three parties involved, which is the agent, principal and the third party. So the next topic is creation of agency. So when you think of how an agency relationship is created, there are four forms in which it can be created. The first and the easiest and the most obvious way is by agreement between principal and the agent. And then second method is by subsequent ratification. Third being operation of principles of estoppel. And fourth and the final way is by operation of law. So and also, before we go into any details about these four methods, it's important to remember the term incomplete agency. I'm sure all of us in our day-to-day lives have come across the word term agent. And not every agent that we consider or call an agent is important is in reference to this term agency relationship. So what we are here referring to as incomplete agency is where an agent has agent or a person has parts, his duties partly are similar to what an agent does, but not hundred percent. Examples can be things like you, if you have come across canvassing agents, examples are estate agents and then there are insurance agents. Their role is somewhat similar to an agent, however, not hundred percent. They make certain representations, but they don't make any, the actions don't bind the principal in the same way as an actual agent's desk. So this is called an instance of incomplete agent. There's also commission agents and distributors and franchises, franchisees. So even in those relationships, that what comes into existence is incomplete agency relationship and not a fully complete and whole complete agency relationship. So let's move on to the first method of creation of agency, which is by agreement. By agreement, so there are two methods by which by agreement, a creation of agency can happen. Those two methods are in express agreement and implied agreement. An express agreement between the principal and agent divides into two further categories called written and oral. So if it's written, you have some record of the agreement. If it's oral, since there are actually no, nothing, no formalities regarding this or statutory requirements regarding the agency relationship unless otherwise brought into action by statutes in future or made relevant, then there is no express or there is no proper format or formalities with regard to an agreement of agency. See, and when, and the second method, after express agreement, there is another method of agreement called implied agreement. Implied agreement is where one party conducts himself towards another in such a manner that it is, it is reasonable for the other to infer that there is consent to the consent for the agency relationship. So this is basically, it's not, even though it's expressed, it's not verbal or neither is it written. So it's basically by conduct, by actions that one insinuates or they are by this, by such conduct, it becomes obvious or non-ambiguous, it has to be somewhat reasonable that there has been some sort of authority that is given to another party to act as an agent. So that is the implied method, how an implied agreement of agency happens. In these instances, in the first instance, which is where there is an express agreement, what passes on from the principal to the agent is actual or real authority. By consenting or by this agreement expressly, which is either written or orally, the principal confers onto the agent actual or real authority. So actual or real authority, now I said previously that the word authority is very important and that it has different forms and this word like actual or real is a part, like is one part of authority, is one form of authority and it's very important, real or actual, that is, it's substantial. So basically, it's important. And in the second instance where there is implied or by conduct, someone confers, the principal confers to the agent authority. It is even then, the authority that is conferred onto the agent is called real or actual authority. In the, where it's express, it's called express authority as well and when it's implied, it's implied authority. Both these forms of authority are real and actual. So when you have, when the agency relationship comes into existence by agreement, the authority that is conferred onto the agent by the principal is actual and real. The, let's move to the second topic, which is subsequent ratification. Subsequent ratification is where initially, when the action happens or when the agent performs a certain action, he does not have authority or the principal has not conferred the authority to, for the agent to act in such a way. It may be that the person, either the agent has exceeded authority or he did not have any authority at the beginning. So when I say exceeded, you have to look at it this way. Imagine I appoint an agent to do certain work for me and I, like, I confer on to him a certain authority to certain, perform certain actions with regarding to a certain circumstance. However, the agent exceeds that authority and takes some actions which does not pertain to the circumstance to which I have given him the authority. However, once the action has been done and it's been informed to me, I ratify it. Meaning I, I agree to it or I say that I will take the responsibility for it. In such a case, imagine the agent comes into a specific contract regarding me without my permission, for which I have not granted him the authority. However, I, once I get to know that there has been such an agreement, I stand by the terms of the agreement, meaning I ratify the actions. That means even though at the beginning of the action, he did not have the authority to perform the action, I have later on conferred on to him and the authority. So therefore, it's subsequent ratification. So later on, I cannot, once I have basically accepted or ratified the contract that he has come into on behalf of me, I cannot later say that I did not, that he did not have the power to enter into the contract on behalf of me, then that I will not ratify it, I will not, I am not bound by any terms because he did not have the power to do so because at the initial point, I have already ratified. So therefore, I have to stand by that. Secondly, where he has, like, there is no authority whatsoever. The person, the agent has no authority to act in such a way. But he acts as if he is my agent, that I have given him some sort of, I have conferred him some powers even though I have not. But he acts as an agent for me and when I find out, find it out finally, I still stand by it. I ratify whatever contracts or I ratify whatever agreements he has come onto on my behalf to, with third parties. When that happens, even though he did initially did not have any authority at all, he wasn't my agent at all. By me ratifying their contract on, he becomes my agent and he gets the authority to act on my behalf. And I am bound as the principal to follow all those terms and I am bound by those terms. And when you're talking about subsequent ratification, there are certain important areas to be discussed. And the first one being, what acts may be ratified? So not all acts even can be ratified by a principal. Who usually, the important, the first question would should be actually, who may ratify? Because who can ratify, only the principal is able to ratify the actions of the, that the agent has made. So we'll move on to that the next, as the next topic. First, we will come to the first topic, which is what acts may be ratified? So for the subsequent ratification, let me quote you a case. In the case of McLean versus Dunn, a particular person entered into a, entered into and signed a written contract on behalf of another person. Let me call the first person A and second person B without authority. A statute requires that a memorandum of the contract be in writing. B later ratified the contract. So at the initial point, A did not have authority to do such an act. That means signing, A can't, didn't have the authority to enter into a sign, signed into a written contract on behalf of B. However, later on, B ratified it. So it was held, the contract was effective and A is deemed to be B's duly authorized agent to sign the memorandum on, by virtue of subsequent ratification. So in each area, I will quote you and explain to you one case. There'll be a separate note or an attachment, I think, under the video, which you can obtain in PDF form if I'm not mistaken. In that case, in that note, you will be able to find at least two cases from each area or more, depending on the note. Those are based on the lectures notes. So I advise you, if you don't have any notes to obtain them, the cases under each area is given under subtopics. It's, there is also going to be a flow chart, which is going to be a summary of the entire lesson that is done in this session. Other than that, under this session, the cases that falls under subtopics are divided and given to, in summarized forms where you can remember them. Roughly, I think if you remember one or two from each area, your answer should be complete. I don't think you need to remember all the cases. Choose the ones which are important or you think is easier for you to understand and remember. Choose those cases and then you can go through them and include them in your answer. It's since these areas have like very small summarized answers, not very lengthy. You could make it lengthy if you're like, you know, some more facts which you could add or if you have like general idea, you can elaborate on them. However, since the points are quite not very lengthy and it's in point form and summary form, it's, it would be more effective for your answer if you could include like two or two cases or one if you can only remember one. So it's important to go through the cases that is given under the video in the PDF format. First topic under ratification being what acts may be ratified? Generally, every act, whether lawful or unlawful, which is capable of being done through an agent, is capable of being ratified by the person in whose name and on whose behalf it was done. So basically, there is no, not much of a restriction generally. However, acts which are void, forgerys or illegalities cannot be ratified, which is kind of obvious because according to the law in, we'll say Sri Lanka, void, acts which are void, forgerys or illegalities are not allowed. So basically, you can't start robbing someone and get an agent to do that or you can't make a contract of agency pertaining to illegal things like drugs, narcotics etc. So let's think, there is few cases under this topic as well. I will go through one, which is called Brook versus Hook. Where an A signed an instrument in B's name without authority and with intent to defraud. So obviously, in this situation, it is illegal because it's signing an instrument on another person's behalf is not ethically legal. But assuming the other person was duly authorized, he could in certain circumstances. However, this was done by the agent or the, or B, was done by A with the intention to defraud. So in that case, it was held that B cannot later ratify the signature. So I cannot imagine the circumstances under which B wanted to ratify this. However, later on, it was held that B cannot ratify this as the intention was to defraud, which is an illegal intention, a illegal form of act which cannot be ratified. The second topic under subsequent ratification is who may ratify? The person who can ratify is the person in whose name or on whose behalf that was done. So no other person other than the principal or the person on whose behalf the act is done can ratify it. And it is important to remember that, that the principal, the principal you have to remember can be an actual person or a company as well. The principal should be in existence on this date of the, when the act was done. So the important or quite popular case for this area is Kelner versus Baxter. Where a promoters of a company purchased wine on behalf, perpetually on behalf of a company, yet not incorporated. So it's, it wasn't a incorporated company on the date where the wine was purchased. So the promoters bought the wine on behalf of the company that was not incorporated as of that time. And later, upon incorporation, the company sought to ratify the contract. So basically, the company sought to ratify the contract and however, the wine was consumed and the company went into liquidation without paying for the wine. So the company came into being later on after the wine was bought and it sought to ratify the contract by the promoters. And later, the wine was drunk and everything and however, the payment was not made for the wine and the company went bankrupt and went into liquidation. So in the case, the seller of the wine sued the, seller of the wine sued the promoters who are like, who initially bought the wine on behalf of the company. And the promoters argued in the case that since the company has ratified the contract, they were not responsible or liable to pay, but the company should actually be paying. It was, however, it was held that as, at the date, as the company did not exist at the time the contract was made, it cannot ratify the contract. A stranger cannot by subsequent ratification relieve the agent from liability. So basically, since the company on this date was an incorporated, the company could not ratify the contract because it was not in existence on the date of the contract. So however, there is this concept currently, this is not very, as the company law sections come into play and also the method of, there is this specific principle called novation. Where in novation, you can, the company, if it had adopted the method of novation, where it bought or basically they re-contracted, made another contract with the wine seller. Basically, assuming the risks or the, taking where it, it's like a sort of buying the risks of the, like a buying the previous terms of the contract from another company, of the promoter. So if they had novated, I will be including a definition of novation in the written note later. So go through that term. If the company had novated, then this would have been possible and it would have been the, this thing, the risk would have been the company's risk and not the promoters. The risk would have been uh the company's risk and not the promoter's. So but since annihilation was not uh done, the company was not liable. So um moving on, the third method. Third uh question to know is full knowledge of the circumstances necessary to ratify. Unless the principal intended to ratify whatever the risk. So it's a kind of uh. Important and uh kinda lengthy. So. When this happens, which is when uh the principal ratifies. The action that is done by the uh agent either by exceeding the. Uh level of authority or by uh. When the agent did not have any sort of authority, what happens is uh. Uh he should have in order for it to be effective. The principal should have full knowledge of the circumstances and necessary information to ratify. Unless the principal intended to ratify whatever the circumstance. So basically, if it's clear that the uh. Principal meant to ratify whatever the uh agent is doing but on his behalf. Then it should be fine, like the ratification should be valid. However, if the principal was. Uh va- basically, if the. Principal did not have the knowledge, like fully required knowledge of what was going on and necessary information for him uh to know. But ratify like agreed to ratify or made some sort of ratification, then he is not bound by the term because he did not have the uh. Proper knowledge of the circumstances. So we'll take two cases into regard about this. Uh the case of the Bonita or the Charlotte. So basically, uh Bonita or Charlotte was a ship. So the captain of a ship sells it where no agency of necessity arises. What agency of necessity uh is? Will be discussed under by of uh under operation of law when we are creation of agencies by operation of law. So basically. Um I'll tell you shortly, by operation of law means uh where agent is not appointed by anyone. But uh due to the circumstances, by operation of law and by necessity itself. The one like the person in the uh beca- a person becomes another the the another the other person's uh. Agent. So it's like uh like if you take for example, imagine there is an emergency. So basically, this a captain of a ship uh can become the agent of a. Ship owner. So basically, he's not an agent, he's not need needs not be appointed. But imagine some they have some emergency at sea and they could uh they need to take certain steps. To like um survive. Imagine the ship is on fire or maybe a ship is sinking. And they need to uh empty the folds or reduce the weight. Then they can take the likes uh to save human life. The captain can can by uh of operation of law is allowed to get rid of uh. The cargo so that he can save the human life. So that is the meaning of uh agency of necessity. Uh that is the circumstance where agency of necessity is uh has arisen. And so basically, in the case of Boni- the Bonita or the Charlotte, the captain of uh the ship sold the ship. Where no agency of necessity arose. So the owner received the received proceeds by a bill of exchange. After like selling the ship, he sent the proceeds to the uh owner of the ship. And thinking that a necessity has arisen, like the owner assumed that there has been and in um. Some sort of necessity has arisen and that's why the ship has been sold. Uh and he accepts the bill of exchange, assuming that there is there was a necessity for uh the ship to be sold. However, upon learning the uh actual circumstance and that there was no uh. Actual uh situation where that needed the ship to be sold, the um owner of the ship. Uh the arrests uh he arrests the ships and encashes the bill and pays the money into the court. So it was held he had not ratified the contract. So basically, the argument was because he accepted the uh bill of exchange. Uh he has ratified the contract or the he has ratified actions of the agent who is which who is the captain at the moment. So. Uh it was held by the court that he had not ratified the contract although he took the he although he took the bill of exchange. Because he had no uh proper knowledge of the cir- actual circumstances. And as soon as he got uh got to know the actual circumstances, his actions proved that he did not uh have the knowledge. And that he did not mean to ratify the uh uh act all any action of the captain. In contrast, in the case of Fitzmaurice versus Bailey, an agent entered into a. An unauthorized contract to purchase land on behalf of his principal who wrote a letter saying that although. He did not know what the agent had agreed, he must support the agent. So basically, what he was saying is. That even though he does not have any knowledge, he's expressly saying that even though he does not have any kind of knowledge as to what the. Agent has agreed to, he will stand by it and ratify. So in this case, it was held that uh it's sufficient ratification. So uh the next question or the fourth one. Uh when with regard to the ratification is what constitutes ratification? So uh. Ratification may be expressed or implied by conduct. So basically, it does not have to be. Ratification does not have to always be uh the principal does not have to always say uh. I mean to ratify it or come into a like and a written basically express uh or a con- uh contract. Saying not all over, written contract, saying that I uh I I am going to ratify this. Uh the ratification can be like uh ratification ratification uh might con- constitute either an express. Ratification or an implied ratification. Implicatization means by certain conduct. So basically, an express ratification is a clear manifestation by the person on whose behalf of unauthorized act has been done. Indicating that he adopts the transaction in question. So basically, uh in the previous in the Fitzmaurice case. Uh it's like the letter is written and in the letter it is clearly said that he means to ratify. So it's enough uh sufficient ratification. So uh basically, an express ratification is quite clear and easy to understand and not ambiguous. So what uh the question or the uh ambiguity comes when you come to uh. The ratification by implication. So. Ratification is implied whenever the conduct is such that it constitutes clear evidence that he adopts the transaction. So example could be like suing upon the contract, returning the money or pay disposal of goods. So basically, um if you the agent has entered into a particular contract on behalf of him. Uh on be- in on behalf of the principal and you being the principal. Uh like uh does some act or imagine it's um it depends on certain goods. That uh they will sell so the third party will sell some goods for you. Uh and then you accept the goods and dispose a part of the goods. Then uh and then you say uh then later on you can't deny that there that you ratify the contract. Because you have accepted and disposed part of the goods. So part ratification is uh uh proof of. Uh ratification. You cannot partly ratify like the contract. If you ratify even in part, that means fully adaptation or fully fully adoption of the contract by your on your part. So ratification need uh not be in writing except in the case of a deed unless it's in the case of a deed. Ratification does not need to be by a written format. So uh. In this case, look at this case, Hunter versus Parker. A captain without the authority of the owner sells the ship. The owner with full knowledge of the facts receives the payment. Held the receipt of money denotes ratification. So you have to contrast this again with Bonita, similar case, except the. Uh owner had full knowledge and accepted the money with uh all the knowledge. And later tried to deny the fact that he ratified. So he cannot deny it because he did not, there was no lack of knowledge on his part. So um therefore, uh it was receipt of the money denotes ratification. Um the second uh. The fifth topic under this which is a ratification is effective from the date of the act ratified. Although proceedings have commenced against the agent or the third party has given notice to withdraw. So what this means is ratification is it dates back to the date um. So basically, imagine the agent con- uh enters into a contract in twenty nineteen April. Rega- uh on behalf of a uh of the principal. The. Contract is entered into on April and ma- the principal only ratifies it. In June of twenty nineteen. However, on June twenty nineteen, even though he ratifies it only on June twenty nineteen. It dates back to the date of the contract, which is the uh which is April twenty nineteen. So when he uh ratifies the contract, the ratification dates back to. Ratification is taken as to be effective from April twenty nineteen. That is what this means. Uh if you take the case of Bolton Partners versus Lambert. A made an offer to the managing director of a company who accepted it without authority. Not knowing of the lack of authority but due to a subsequent disagreement, a per- A perpetrated to withdraw the offer. The company ratified uh ratified the management the managing director's acceptance. A refused to perform the contract. It was held that ratification dated back to the time of acceptance. And there was a binding contract. The perpetrated withdrawal of the offer was therefore a breach. Accordingly, specific performance was ordered against A. So basically, even though. The withdrawal uh of the. Offer uh came in like the withdrawal happened before the ratification date of ratification. When the ratification occurred, it dated back to the date of the acceptance and therefore. It was a breach of a term. So there uh you can uh the sort remedy was. A specific for- performance and it was uh ordered against A. Uh the sixth point is ratification must be within a reasonable time that is I think simply understandable. So uh what's reasonable, the term reasonable as always in law. Is always depending on the circumstances of the case. It's not a specific period of time that we can define. So ratification of a particular uh contract or a particular act. Made by the uh agreement made by the agent on behalf of the principal. Ratification of the principal should be within a reasonable time. So if it does not happen within a reasonable time, the uh. Principal cannot be uh it cannot be uh subsequent ratification cannot be applied in such a circumstance. And then the effect of ratification. Ratification supplies the uh so this is like the basic what happens when you basically ratify. When a principal ratifies the actions of an agent who did not have the authority or who exceeded the authority, this is the effect of it. Ratification supplies the authority which the agent lacked at the time he acted. Ratification relates to the time of the unauthorized act. So uh it relates meaning it dates back to the uh. Date of the unauthorized act. It creates rights and obligations between the principal and the third party to the contract. So the rights and obligations are between the principal and the third party relating to the uh pertaining to the contract. And not between the agent or and the principal. Uh and then it releases the agent from liability. Imagine if uh if the uh principal did not ratify and sued the. Agent, then he's liable because he has exceeded his authority. However, if the principal ratifies the contract or. Ratifies the actions of the agent who did not uh exceeded his authority, then. He cannot later on uh sue him or uh get any damages of him for exceeding his authority. Or acting without any authority. So um the agent becomes entitled to his commission. In my uh if he he is owed to a certain like, the agreement says that for his services that he is owed a certain commission. Uh so basically, by ratifying the action that is done by the agent for which he did not have authority or for which he exceeded authority. The principal accepts or the principal shows that uh there is a commission to be owed to the agent. Therefore, he becomes entitled to an um to a commission. The authority conferred by ratification is sometimes called subsequent authority. Now this term authority, I told you there is like different forms of authority. The first uh type of authority we learned was actual or real. This is the second type, subsequent authorities. Since such authorities conferred after the act is done. It's called subsequent authority. It's another form of uh authority. Um so let's move on to the other topic which is agency arising by stopper. It is where a person by words or by conduct represents or permits to be represented. That another person is his agent. He will not be permitted to deny the agency. With respect to anyone dealing with the person held out as agent on the faith of such representation. So basically, if I allow another person to make a representation to another third party or related third party. Uh saying that he or she is my agent and I do not stop him or like I do not. Uh deny it to the third party knowingly, like uh assuming I have knowledge of this as like. I should know that this is actually happening. If I do not know and I don't know that this I that this is happening, then I can't obviously stop it. Or deny to another third party. So basically, it does not mean I I either like let the other person represent. Or I indulge him or I endorse him. So basically, I make certain. Uh certain of the implications that looks as if that makes the other person look as if he's my agent. Or I keep totally quiet knowing that this person is basically making such a representation to the other person. I do not endorse it. I do not deny it, but I keep quiet or silent. In such circumstances, later on. In any circumstance, I am I I am not allowed to say that this person is not my agent. Because I have allowed this uh allowed the other third party to uh. Have this belief that I am the agent and uh he went through, he or she went through this um. Situation or went went through or uh came into agreement with the agent, assuming that I am. Uh I am the principal and the particular person is an agent. So the position will be so even if the agency has not arisen in any of the ways set out pre- previously. So uh even. So we'll take one case. Freeman and Lockyer versus Buckhurst Park uh Propeties. A and B formed a company to sell a large estate. A and B together with two persons representing each of them. Were the directors of the company. A agreed to spend for running expenses and to get reimbursed from the profits of the sale. A was not the managing director of the company. However, he instructed certain architects to do some work, including obtaining planning permission. The architects sued the company for their fees. Held the company is liable to the architects for fees although A was never appointed. As managing director as he was held out as managing director. Uh so this is a. Pretty much clear-cut case where these two particular persons get get together to form a sort of a. pretty much clear cut case where these two particular persons get get together to form a sort of a company and they manage and and they are the only two people running the business. They one person even though he was not the managing director acts as if he's a managing director and the other person who is involved in this business. Uh or the father partner does not uh deny the fact that he's managing director and he uh acts as if this person is also the director, does not deny it even though he has knowledge. And uh when the company uh when the architects uh sue the company saying the that the company is liable to pay them their fees. Uh they were not allowed to uh put the blame on the managing director and say that he is not the managing director so that he could not make any decisions. Uh make any uh directions to the architects. Therefore, the company is not liable. So that is operate uh uh is the principle of estoppel. Uh there is a few more cases if you uh you should uh go through those in the PDF. Uh where agency arises by estoppel, the agent acts within his apparent authority. So this is another form of authority. First authority uh form of authority being uh that uh real or actual authority. Second form being subsequent authority and the third one being apparent authority. So apparent authority is something that is is not very different from actual authority. Actual authority is something that is actually conferred expressly or impliedly. When it comes to apparent authority, there is no actual authority conferred to the person with the agent. However, there is an apparent authority and in the appearance, it appears as if this person has a particular authority. So therefore, the agent acting as if he has authority is known as apparent authority. And that's the authority, it's something somewhat less than actual authorities in power like in um in scale or the value of it is less. However, it's pretty much effective because even though it appears as if no one has denied it before when before the action took place. Even though people the other first people had the knowledge or the principal had the knowledge. It was not denied at any point that the person is not an agent or did not have the right to represent. So therefore, the person has an apparent authority on which the third party depends on when making his decisions. So therefore, the principal is not allowed to uh deny the deny that the other person is not his agent because he allowed the representation. The final uh method of uh creation of agency is age uh agency arising by operation of law. So this is basically not something that can be controlled. It's according to the law in these uh particular circumstances. There is uh agent the con- contract of agency arises. Uh the two instances being presumption of authority by cohabitation and the second one agency of necessity. I delved into the uh agency of necessity a bit previously. However, the presumption of authority by cohabitation is uh basically it's spouses who usually cohabit. Uh currently you can it doesn't it doesn't depend on marriage. So cohabitation means living together basically, cohabiting the same space. So if you are known to cohabit the same uh space or the same dwelling or the house uh so basically then uh two people living together or two people living together, one person may be uh taken to be the agent of the other. Uh if you take the normal case which is husband and wife. A wife may be taken to be the agent of the husband because they cohabit together. So uh where husband and wife live together and maintain a household. A presumption arises, the wife has the authority to pledge the credit of the husband for necessary suitable to their lifestyle in respective matters usually entrusted to the wife's management. So basically, if two people are living together with their husband, it's not does not like uh like I said, does not depend on marriage. Ha- two spouses or two partners living together where the uh female or the wife is allowed like represent is allowed to be uh the representative of the husband. Uh not rega- with regard to everything but de- uh with regard to household necessities. They are maintaining household together, therefore for the household necessities, the wife um could be taken to be the agent of the husband. Uh and uh like when you say household necessities, it also depends on the their lifestyle. So imagine the household necessities for a medium uh income on a family uh family uh couple would be different. Compared to a luxury uh luxuriously living like a luxury or very wealthy couple. So assuming the status and their lifestyle, the definition of household necessities would be um dip somewhat different. So um the presumption arises from cohabitation and not from marriage. It's pre- very important to remember that the presumption arises from cohabitation. That is, living together in the same space, cohabiting the same space and not from the contract of marriage. Therefore, even if the persons are not married, the presumption may arise from cohabitation. So it does not always have to be husband and wife, it could even be maybe a housekeeper. So housekeeper of a house is the person who makes the necessary uh house like who makes decisions on uh relevant to the household necessities. So the house in such a case, by cohabitation, the housekeeper uh becomes uh can be held or a presumption of agency arises for a housekeeper to be the agent of the master or the um main person living in the house. Uh it does not and also it is not about gender, so it may not be a uh the woman at all, so it might be a housekeeper who is male who generally runs the house. Uh the principal also need not be a man and principal can be a woman, so basically a housekeeper and the woman living together, the principal is the woman. And uh the owner of the house and housekeeper is the uh agent. May arise if the parties are cohabiting though physically living together. Uh may arise if the parties are for him. Example, husband being away on military service, so they don't always have to physically live together their life. So husband and I married, usually living together, but if you're in a military service, you're not at home like all the time. So basically you're only here for a part time. So in such a case, the wife could pledge the husband's credit and buy household necessities. So then the wife will become the agent of the husband. That is what this uh presumption means. The presumption will not arise if they are not living in a household. So even the husband in the military goes away when he's back, when he's this is his house, so this is his household where he lives. If he's not in the military or the brackets. So and then the term of the their term necessities are a reasonable supply of goods and services suitable to the station in life of the parties. That is their lifestyle, like I said before, the necessities, the term necessities, the definition of the term necessities may be different depending on the lifestyles that they live. No extravagant not extravagant or excessive quantities can be obtained because this is for household necessities. Burden of proof that the goods or services are necessary is on the supplier. So basically uh if uh the person who alleges that uh let's take a situation where the husband and wife basically lives together. Imagine the husband goes away to the military and the wife pledges the husband's credit and purchases certain household necessities. And uh however, the husband refuses when he's back, he refuses to pay. Saying um even he refuses to pay, the seller or the supplier can use this presumption to uh support his case, saying that what the wife is the agent of the husband. And therefore, the husband is the principal and he is liable and bound by the terms of the agent that he needs to pay. So when he's alleging uh this particular scenario, he has to uh the supplier or the seller of the goods. Uh he has a burden to prove that the wife uh the uh the he has to the seller or the supplier of the goods has uh he has to prove the as in he has the burden of proof uh are necessities. Um that they are the ne- they are the goods or the services provided by him are necessities. If the goods or services are not necessary, supplier cannot even get a reduced price. So second uh care topic is agency of necessity. Agency of necessity uh like I explained previously, agency of necessity arises in situations like emergencies. So a person may have authority to act on behalf of another where he is faced with an emergency in which the property or interest of that person is in danger and it becomes necessary to so act to preserve such property or interest. So basically, the people, the two persons, the uh principal and the agent does not need to be related at all. However, by circumstances, uh he may be uh a person may end up as an agent of the uh of another person. So the principle of agency of necessity may authorize the disposal of property. May entitle him for reimbursement reimbursement of expenses or may entitle him to set up a defense in suit for wrongful action. Agency by necessity usually arises where goods are entrusted to carriers of goods by sea or land. So this is the case of the ship like I said. Uh where a ship owner may sell uh sell the ship or certainly throw uh some goods. Uh like cargo, they might unload the cargo into the sea to sa- save human life. Uh so there are certain rules to determine necessity. Uh and those are that the it must be impossible or impracticable impracticable to communicate with the principal to obtain instructions. Uh so imagine a ship is basically um sinking because the ship has been damaged and they had to basically the captain has to make the decision to unload the uh major part of the cargo to the sea to save the vessel from sinking. In such a case, what happens is this is it in you have to think whether is it practical practical for him to be uh trying to communicate this to the uh principal, asking like getting his permission and giving him the basic um information. It is not because this is an emergent situation. So in such a case, he does not need the permission or does not need the to communicate to the owner or the principal that he will be uh taking this particular action. So uh the next one is the action must be necessary. The test is objective, the mere opinion of the agent is irrelevant. So basically, the action must be, so basically, if you don't throw the cargo into the sea in the previous example, the ship will sink. So is it necessary, so there is human life concerned. Uh so is it necessary, obviously, because uh if not, this uh vessel will sink. So but if there is a method by which both the ship can and the cargo can be saved without unloading the cargo into the sea. Then he cannot get rid of the uh cargo uh without the permission of the um principal. So basically, the test that is uh applied by the courts to decide whether this is an actual next necessary action is objective rather than subjective. So and the opinion of what the agent thought at that moment that he felt it's necessary or not is not relevant. Mere inconvenience to the agent does not create necessity. Create necessity, so there is a later on case about this and the action must be bona fide in the interest of the principal. So the action that is done by the this uh should be bona fide, can't be malicious or it can't be um uh in violation of the rights of the principal. The action cannot be contrary to express instructions as well. Uh if you take this take this case, Great Northern Railway versus Farfield. He delivered a horse to a railway company for transport but failed to collect it on arrival at the destination. The railway company stabled and fed the horse and claimed the cost from the owner. Held, own a liable as this was a contract made due to necessity. So basically, there was no uh contract that was made where the railway um railway company agreed to feed the animal and stable him and all that. However, he was bound by those, he was bound to pay the costs because uh obviously, the railway company can't let the animal go free or get rid of it. They had to hold, so it's a it was a basic necessity to hold it, there was no other option. So the principal had to pay the costs that was relevant to keep the animal, feed him and stable him. Uh so there's uh two other cases also that is relevant under this particular area that is the about the necessity, whether it's necessity or not. So uh please go through those cases which has been provided in the link, I'm assuming it's a link uh under the video. Uh all those cases are the cases which were uh taken from the lecturer's note and his lectures. So it's very important, uh make sure that you remember some of them at least and go through them. Uh and there is two other parts uh that is relevant for agency. We have only covered the first part which is creation of agency topic. There's two more uh sessions that will be held, cover the rest of the areas. And those uh then we'll be done with agency and moving on to we'll be moving on to insurance and partnership. And uh this is um this is the area, uh this is the beginning, it's important that you have like understand these areas. Especially the a- areas um especially authority, what the uh term authority implies and the types of authorities as far as described until now. Because later on, we will go into uh another um area where uh the types of authority will come into play. And it will be very important to have a basic foundation and like a basic idea and understanding of what authority means. So uh this is all for creation of agency.